35, school board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of School and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker. Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schluessner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand as we're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, recognitions. Mr. Munoz.
Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Region 1 Annual Luncheon, which is the region that we compete in, all three high schools compete in, and at that time, they recognize all of the coaches that were state champions and give out other awards as well. We had one of our current elementary principals receive the Kerwin Engelhardt Award, and so we thought would be an opportunity for us to, um, get that up on the screen there, Kurt.[140.16][140.16](Laughter). There we go.[143.16][143.16](Laughter). So, at this time, I'm gonna have Mark Queasly and Kerwin and George come up and we're gonna talk a bit about this award.[153.22][153.22](Laughter). At this time, I would like to introduce George the Legend Nemnitz.[163.22][163.22](Laughter).
Okay. Good evening, everyone and board members, Ms. Edgar. Before us this evening is Kerwin Engelhardt, a retired Rochester Public Schools Administrator, former Activities Director, while it was Athletic Director at that time, of Rochester Public Schools at Mayo and John Marshall, and a former Region Secretary. And the legend, as you see up there, I'm thinking he's talking to the cheerleaders with that tone in the picture, but anyway, Mr. Engelhardt was a longstanding contributor to many things in southeastern Minnesota, and the legend lives on for Kerwin as he continues to do great things, and he's been a great mentor for so many over the years, myself included as an administrator. But his award is to recognize individuals who, for their leadership, service, and special accomplishments and contributions to either athletics or fine arts programs in Region 1 AA. Candidates are eligible and nominated by the member schools, or 16 member schools and its administrative staff, athletic coaches, fine arts, activities directors, cheerleaders, that type of thing. And the recipient of this year's award, as Mr. Munoz said, is Mr. George Nemnitz. So, George and Kerwin?
Well, thank you for recognizing this award. I, I shared this picture with the cabinet because somebody had asked me last year if I ever got mad, and they've never seen me mad before. I said, "Well, I have a picture I could show you that." But I didn't know it was gonna be like this, so...[273.33][273.33](Laughter). But anyway, I really appreciate the recognition. I just have to say, getting this award from Region 1 AA was meaningful to me because it's the Kerwin Engelhardt Award. And I know many of you know Kerwin for all of his work in Rochester, and I am very fortunate to have gotten to know him while I was a coach in Red Wing. And of course, Kerwin is an alumnus of Red Wing High School, class of 47, I believe. So, anyway, so getting to know Kerwin, and I think Kerwin had a little bit to do with my journey down to work in Rochester, and I'm grateful for all that he's helped me with and guided me with, and that's why this award means so much to me. So, I really do appreciate, I have to say, it's wonderful working in this school district. I know, you know, we run up against things that aren't always easy, but the beauty of Rochester is that it's a community that is very progressive in its thinking and has a way of overcoming hurdles and being a leader in education. So, from that standpoint, I'm very grateful to be a part of this district. And again, thank you very much for recognizing me and this award.[357.62][357.62](Applause).
Well, congratulations there, George and Kerwin, even though he's no longer serving that role, he's constantly, every time I go to events, he's at many of our Rochester schools, so he continues to support our district and our students, so thank you, Kerwin, for that.
We have one additional recognition. Ms. Workman?
My God, sit down.
Boy, this is really scary looking at you all. I was at the Association of Metropolitan School Districts meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I was asked to present this to Superintendent Munoz. The inscription on it says, "To Michael Munoz, in appreciation of your dedicated service on the AMSD Legislative Committee 2018." And some of the things that our superintendent does, he likes to keep as well, you know, kind of hidden, lots of good things, and this is one of them. So, he's been a real asset to not only our school district, but also to the metropolitan area school districts that were part of him. So, I would like you to come up and receive this.
And I'm assuming, Mr. Munoz, you'd like to make a short speech?
No.[456.31][456.31](Laughter). Thank you.
That's short, okay. Thank you so much, and congratulations. 3.02, school board committee assignments updates. Any updates on your committee assignments? Mr. Schluessner?
Well, I know we shouldn't have a longer update a little bit later on the Facilities Task Force, I would like to say that, you know, from my point of view of attending the meetings, it's been a really good dialogue with the community, and I'd say I've been very impressed with the way they've been going. I think the consultant hired has been doing a really good job. And, you know, this is some of the stuff that you won't hear as part of that update, but again, it's been a really good community dialogue, and the meeting's been going really well. They've listened to the feedback we've provided and adjusted as needed. It's been good.
Thank you. Other updates. Ms. Workman?
I have a couple of updates. I attended the Policy Committee meeting on August 27th, and I will be briefing those later in the agenda. We were, I think all the school board members were invited to attend the Riverside Gallery closing celebration of the Children's Museum on Wednesday, September 5th. And that was absolutely wonderful, to see the contributions that our students and the community have made to really honoring our students and, yeah, to really honoring our And then, on Friday, the 7th, I already mentioned, I was at the AMSD meeting in St. Paul. There was a very interesting presentation by Bill Morris of a survey taken in the Metro School District Geographic Area. We're part of this, just for those who are watching this meeting, we are part of this district or this association because those metro area schools more accurately mirror our district in terms of size and challenges. Anyway, Bill Morris did a survey to, that was of the Metro School District Geographic Area concerning a lot of data in terms of people's feelings about different school aspects and elections and this kind of thing. It doesn't include Rochester, but I did have a follow-up with Scott Cromquist, and he said, "I had a chance to talk to Bill Morris before he left this morning and asked him to what extent the polling data he shared would be reflective of the Rochester electorate." He told me that he recently conducted a survey for the City of Rochester, and that might be better for you to take a look at that data rather than making any assumptions about the data he shared this morning. He said he thought the data from the City of Rochester survey would be interesting and helpful to school board members in the school district. Perhaps can contact the city manager or mayor and see if they are willing to share the report with you. So, I have made a couple of contacts, have not gotten any information yet. Don't mean to step on the superintendent's toes if he's already involved in this, but I thought it might be interesting to take a look at.
Thank you. Any other reports? Mr. Schluessner?
Just a reminder, for the Public School Foundation, they have Boo Fest coming up, and it's gonna be another exciting year.
Ms. Workman?
One addition to the Boo Fest, as many of you know, a lot of the Boo Fest costumes and materials and everything else that they use for Boo Fest were damaged in where they were located, and Rochester Public School Foundation would certainly appreciate lots of donations of the Halloween variety, and you can contact the Rochester Public School Foundation if you have something to contribute.
Thank you. Anything else? 4.0, consent agenda. This is an action item.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and the discussion I had that I forgot to mention before, is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.01, approval of boundary adjustments for the 2019-2022 school years, recommended by the Facilities Task Force. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, I'm gonna have Kevin Holm from LHB, and I think the two chairs are going to join him. Just as a reminder, in our last meeting, they kinda gave you an update on the boundary work that the task force is working on. At that time, there was suggestion from the board to look at doing something to address Franklin Elementary, so they went back at our last task force meeting and had some conversation about that. So, tonight's the official briefing of the boundary recommendation, and to remain on timeline, our hope is that the board can take action next meeting, which will be October 2nd, I do believe. This way, we can get that information out for our kindergarten, I always forget what we call it, but...
Kickoff.
Kickoff. Back when I was an elementary principal, it was kindergarten roundup, but I guess it's kickoff here, so we can have that information made, decision made at that time, so we can inform parents. So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Marla right away.[793.13][793.13](Laughter).
Pass it up. Marla Carney, Task Force Co-Chair. Things that we're gonna talk about tonight, review the current objective for tonight's meeting, boundary recommendation, and next steps for the task force. Previously, we talked about the elementary capacity, gave an update on the short-term options, middle school capacity, district-wide option, we'll do an update, and the boundary adjustments. The current meeting objective is to provide additional information regarding a short-term boundary adjustment for 2019 to 2022 to facilitate a board per approval in October of 2018. Facts and questions. Why is this being done? Of course, to reduce the overcrowding and balance enrollment to building capacities if possible. The timeline, when and how long is the short-term balancing from 2019 to 2022, plus or minus? Will more be required? Future changes will be based on enrollment and guidelines created, adopted, and additional capacity. How does it affect middle school and high school capacities? No changes to middle school and high school boundaries are anticipated. The criteria guidelines for the elementary school boundaries, goal is to keep students who are able to walk to school at their neighborhood school to the greatest extent possible. This is an attempt to relieve schools that are greater than 110% utilization level to schools that are less than 90% utilization level. And moving students to and from buildings between the 95 and 105% would likely require reoccurring boundary changes based on historic fluctuations in attendance by grade and building. The boundary recommendation says that you can see the schools above the 105% utilization, non-district-wide options, Elton Hills, which is 37 students over, I'm gonna have to do this, my eyes aren't that bad, Franklin, which is 48 students over, Jefferson, 52 students over. The schools below 90% utilization, you have Churchill, which is 54 students under, and Hoover is 61 students under. As you can see, the red shaded areas are the overcapacity, over 105%. Close to that. Elton Hills, Franklin, Gage, Jefferson, and, continue.
Okay.
Sorry. The boundary recommendation, we have assumptions, students currently attending a district-wide option school will continue to do so. These would be at Lincoln, Longfellow, Washington, the Gage, Spanish Immersion, Montessori at Franklin. Students currently transferring, with exception to attendance from their home school to another boundary school, will be allowed to continue, and student locations are based on the August 2018 enrollment.
Okay, so as we updated our utilization for 2018, this shows you these buildings that would be under capacity, which would be Churchill Hoover, and then 80 to 90%, 90 to 100, 100 to 110, and anything over 110. So, the red area is what we primarily focused on as directed by the school board in some of our conversations. So, we looked at moving Elton Hills to Churchill Hoover, which is 67 students in K5, approximately 38 are attending Elton Hills. Jefferson to Churchill Hoover, 51 students total, K5, 37 attending Jefferson, and then Franklin to Riverside, which is the addition of our information, 30 in K5, 10 now currently attending Franklin. So, as we looked at the map, those are the affected areas initially. The very bottom one, again, that will go to Churchill Hoover, the next one up just south of 37th Street will also go to Churchill Hoover, and then the one way up on top will be our last adjustment from Jefferson to Churchill Hoover. And again, here's a close-up. This is the area south of 37th Street and west of the river, and then we're going down to the next one, which is North Broadway on the west side of North Broadway. And then, our last area is basically the northeast corridor as it follows the river, that's why that boundary's kinda wiggly and squiggly for you, is it follows the river pattern. And then, the last area that you asked us to take a look at was the Franklin overcrowding two weeks ago, I guess it was, and we located an area basically from the quick trip on, I used to call it the Belt Line, but it's 14th Avenue Southeast, and we go straight east out towards Eastwood Golf Course, and that's basically that elongated area that you're seeing all south of Highway 14. So, by making those changes, we were able to move Elton Hills from 108.6% down to 99.8. The Franklin area, we were able to take that down a little bit, from 107.2 down to 105.5, and then Gage stayed the same, and Jefferson went from 109 down to 102.6, and then, of course, Washington was kinda at capacity. So, as you can see, we were at 97.5% capacity before we started doing the boundary adjustments, and we're still at 97.5 in capacity, but we've also increased the enrollment at Churchill, Churchill Hoover, to make those buildings more, more close to being full. They're not quite full yet, 89.6%, or 93.5%, depending on which one you're looking at there. Okay? So, then our next steps is we're talking about our high school capacities and the options to increase capacities, and then long-term boundary adjustments, if there will be continued long-term boundary adjustments, evaluation of facility equity, that's something we're still trying to determine what is equitable within the district when we're looking at our buildings, sites and locations for possible purchase of property, and then the scope of a possible referendum. So, there's your update. If anyone has questions, I think?
I will add that, I don't know how much it'll impact the Franklin percentage, but we have been working on looking at students that were attending Franklin that wanted to get into Longfellow, so we were able to move some students that I don't think are reflected in that percentage into Longfellow. It may drop, it may be 1%, and I don't think, it's not enough that it's gonna drop it too much, but it should be slightly lower than what it's reflected up on the screen right now.
Ms. Workman?
Okay, so, a couple days ago, I was really confused about Slide 15, but I think I understand it now. So, current enrollment is on the top, on the left side, middle-left side, and then 18-19 enrollment with the boundary change. That means this year's school enrollment, what it would be with the boundary changes, that's correct?
Yes.
You're not really projecting what might happen in 1920.
Right. You have enough students moving around, and you're so close to that maximum threshold as it is, that, you know, in order to try and identify what it's gonna be next year would be a guess.
And so, I think we have about, is it 248 students more than we had planned on this year? Are, I mean, it seems like a small number compared to 18,000, but do you anticipate this affecting any of this, or do we just wait until we get the final number on October 1st?
So, from everything we've found here, (noise) from everything that we know to date, your enrollment's gonna continue to increase based on the fact of what we call age forward, or the class sizes going forward. So, right now, your 7th grade is kind of your first, or your highest grade level of the 1,300-plus students, and so as that advances through the, through the middle schools and the high schools, that's gonna continue to increase the load on those buildings. Right now, your elementary capacity is up there, it's been staying pretty steady, but it looks like there might be, you know, be an influx coming again at the elementary level as well.
I have two quick questions, and I think both of these are for administration rather than for the task force in general. One of them is that I understand that there have been two feedback sessions, so you've had sessions available for public to come, look at the plan, and give feedback.
That is correct.
Yes.
And then there will be other opportunities, I'm assuming between now and the next meeting, that if people have ideas, have comments, they can contact the board members, for instance, or the facilities?
Yeah, 'cause the task force meets again next...
Next week.
Week.
Okay.
We don't have our next citizens meeting until November.
Yes.
So, you'll have made a decision before we have a community meeting again. We did send out communication to the families that would be impacted by this change, so they're aware that the board would be presented this information tonight, and we haven't, to my knowledge, received any direct feedback from, from those communication that was sent out.
Okay, thank you. And the second one is sort of hypothetical. In the event that there is some really unforeseen huge influx of kids in one particular part of the city, is it likely that there would need to be, or that there would be another adjustment, boundary adjustment before 2022, or is this likely gonna be it until the new buildings, if we do have new buildings, are constructed? Why are you smiling?[1495.01][1495.01](Laughter).
Because, like you said, it's kind of a crystal ball type deal. Right now, the large influxes don't necessarily happen in a, in a manner of a large number of kids. What will happen that'll cause some more difficulties at your buildings because they are so full is if you have bubble-sized classes going through that require an additional grade or an additional classroom. And that's really what I think will be your biggest struggle, but you will likely see these percentages stay at or above this level, and you're gonna see the red switch around from building to building, from what we've seen even just from last year to this year. And that's why the bound, the kind of recommendation is set from 110, you know, whenever a building exceeds that, now you need to start moving that and looking for a building that's less. But with the number of buildings you have, the size they are, moving just a couple kids changes that percentage pretty significantly, so it's, it's kind of a growing pain that you'll have until something comes online or until your enrollment declines.
Okay, thank you for that. That's a good explanation. Ms. Workman?
So, would it be fair to say that even though we will be making some kind of a boundary adjustment, that it's not necessarily set and stoned, and if you missed being affected on this round, that you will remain unaffected for the next few years? That's a crystal ball question, I realize, but I'm, what I'm thinking about are, we do have some fairly large construction projects with apartments and so on going in, we have no idea how many children that will involve, if any, but I just don't wanna have the board be in the situation of saying, "We're making this promise, boom, set in stone, and nothing's gonna change," but for the public to understand that we could have some variations, some significant, perhaps some not significant.
That is a possibility, like you indicated. Again, it's gonna depend on what ages those kids are and how they fill into the grade levels that are already within the school with the grade advance and what happens. You do have families moving from, from region to region or boundary to boundary as it is right now, and that affects it, you know, as you go through each year, so. And that, that will look different in October, based on what we've seen as far as students moving around in the, in the first few weeks of school, so.
Ms. Seelinger?
So, thank you for taking a look at Franklin, which I believe was my suggestion. I was disheartened that there's not really, and not that we expected there to be any great solution to that. I, I just wanna say that my feeling of taking that area and moving 10 students, in my opinion, isn't really worth it, 'cause I just think that, yes, it has some impact, and I appreciate Ms. Carney talking about impact in terms of common spaces, even just with a few, but I'm, I'm trying to also, for the good of the students, just moving the 10 students to another building, that kind of, it feels a little hard for those students that may be spread out between grades and then they're, they're uprooted and...
One of the pieces that I will comment on this is the west, or the far-left side of that, if you're looking at the image, is where one of those current housing developments is happening.
Ah, I see.
So, it might be 10 now, but by 2022, it might be more than 10.
I'll do thanks for that.[1717.33][1717.33](Laughter). Okay, thank you. Good point.
I think it's 144 units, we were told today, something like that, I'm not sure, but...
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you so much, appreciate your, appreciate work. And there is another question, but we still appreciate your work.
We're still appreciating all the work. Let's see. Oh, I know, we haven't talked about, and appreciate your work if no one said that. I know you guys are working really hard and...
I'll second that.
How were, how were these geographical areas chosen?
So, we did look at other boundaries, and what we got back with some of the feedback was, you're starting to get too close to another building, pull it back a little bit. So, at times, we were moving more students, and we just realized that it was starting to interfere with that proximity to buildings. So, we kind of started pulling back closer to existing boundaries so that we were doing enough to make a difference, but not impacting the walkability and the, and the transportation side of things, if at all possible.
Okay, so in terms of how we look at our map now, where we have designations of Riverside East or West, or whatever those little pockets... or West or whatever those little pockets that we have named on our current map, it's not necessarily taking one of those current boundary spots and saying, we're going to move this piece. These are new pieces than what we currently have.
Yes. In a lot of cases, if you took that entire section, you'd either be taking too many kids
Too much.
Or, you know, creating some other inequity that you, that wasn't intended.
Okay. Thank you. And I already picked Kevin's brain before you even sat down today, so appreciate your patience with me. I think going back to both Director Marvin and Director Workman's questions about will we have to change boundaries again, I think that you, on your FAQ slide, you kind of say short-term balancing, plus or minus for these years, right? But just want to clarify on your assumptions, and again, this might be administrative, on the, let's see. The boundary recommendation slide, students currently transferring exception to attendance from their home school to another will be allowed to continue, but that is just simply for next year, correct? Like, we, we could make a, a different administrative decision on closing accept, acceptance to attendance or a grade level or something as we go forward. So just again, for the, the greater good, that we may have to make little tweaks either at the board level or administratively, so folks should be aware of that.
Yeah, which we have, this current year, we've closed a couple of buildings for exception to attendance and open, and open enrollment because of that.
Okay, that's good. All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else?
I'd just like to say kudos to Jason, Kevin, and also Matt. They have supplied us with some outstanding information for us to look at, digest, and then they come back with more information each and every time, based on what we want, and they've been phenomenal to work with, so.
Ms. Workman.
I think I've said this already, and I know I said it last time, but please let the rest of your task force know how much I, and I'm assuming my colleagues on the board really appreciate this work. It's something that the board would not be able to do on its own, and you obviously have a much better representation and lots of input, so thank you very much for this. It's very helpful.
Yeah, having that input and the work really be done by the community, I think is the best example of a community in the school district working together, and that's, it's a huge, it's really important, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. Thank you. Ms. Seelinger, other questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Seven-point-oh-one District Sponsored Growth Health and Dental Insurance and Flexible Benefit Plan Open Enrollment Period for the two thousand eighteen calendar year. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will provide this information for us tonight.
All right. Good evening, Board, Superintendent Munoz, Ms. Edgar. I'm here to talk about our group health and dental plans and the upcoming open enrollment period. Rochester Public Schools has been self-insured since nineteen eighty-three, and we govern the trust that holds our health and dental insurance dollars. And on this trust, we have a district employee representative, a superintendent's designee, school board rep, and two members from the community. They provide oversight as far as contracting with vendors and setting premiums. Then separately, we also have the Employee Insurance Committee that has one member from each employee group, so a principal, a teacher, a clerical, and maintenance, and so on and so forth, who get together once or twice a year to talk about ways we can modify the plans and come to consensus on making some changes that would hopefully hold down costs and keep premiums as low as possible for employees. That group met on June fourth and made several changes this year. This is a more extensive list than we've had in the last couple of years. So in our co-pay plans, that's our low deductible plan, we're going to increase deductibles from five hundred dollars to seven fifty. And then on our high deductible plan, we agreed to raise the deductible from fifteen-hundred to seventeen fifty. We also are eliminating a wellness benefit. We are adding, though, a hearing aid benefit. We're modifying the fitness center reimbursement benefit. We're removing the investigational experimental benefit. We added acupuncture as an eligible service, and we are removing the deduct, deductible carryover provision. And then separately, the trust or the plan administrator, we've decided that we're going to add a third option for a health plan next year, and we're still fine-tuning what the deductibles and the premium rates will be on that. We plan to address that in the next couple of weeks. So our employees will have a third option. I kind of call it the ultra-high deductible plans, so it's going to have a higher deductible than what our other two plans have, but it'll come at a lower premium cost to them. The trustees, as I said, are going to be meeting in a couple of weeks to set overall premiums for two thousand nineteen, so our employees will know what it's going to cost them on their paychecks for health insurance. As you know, most of our groups, or I should say, all of our groups have a dental and health insurance cap, which limits the amount the district contributes. So as premiums go higher, really, the cost falls now to our employees. Separately, we also want to announce to our employees that the open enrollment period is going to be October twenty-fourth to November fourteenth. So our employees will have the option to change health plans, add, remove coverage, so on and so forth, just like most other employers, and then that will be effective for the two thousand nineteen calendar year. And that's my update on that.
Any questions? Ms. Workman.
Could you briefly explain the process that was used to determine which of the wellness benefits you eliminated and which ones were added?
Sure. So we work with a company called Hays, and they give us a list of things that maybe we have that other companies don't have, or give us suggestions on if you change this deductible, it will save on this amount on the monthly premiums. And so they, they propose many different options, and as a group, we kind of all went through it, and we gave our thumbs up and thumbs down to things. And like I said before, since the cost is now falling primarily to our employees, we had a vested interest in, in tweaking coverages so that we're coming in hopefully with not very much of a premium increase in two thousand nineteen. So all these changes kind of work together and net it out to, we're hoping either very minimal increase or potentially even a small decrease.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Seven-point-oh-two Approval Proposed School District Property Tax Levy Payable in two thousand nineteen. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item.
All right. Here we go for the annual talk about the preliminary levy. So remember that tonight, we're talking about the preliminary levy, we're talking about the maximum amount it can be, and then when we reconvene in December, we will talk about the final levy numbers. So what does the property tax levy fund? We've got some general education revenue through the voter-approved operating revenue that the voters approved, and that goes to fund just normal day-to-day expenses such as salaries, maintenance, transportation, so on and so forth. Those dollars are very flexible, and we can use them how we need to. We also have the community service levy, and that supports programs in community education, early childhood, family education, school readiness, adult basic education. And then we have the debt service fund, where anytime we issue debt, we have to create a levy to, to pay the principal and interest. Right now, we're down to three issues that are voter-approved. We're still paying off Riverside, Century, and Gibbs. As I've said many times, Riverside and Century are just about to be paid off. This is actually the last levy you'll set that include those dollars for those payments, and then you'll be down to just Gibbs as the last voter-approved debt issuance. I'd like to talk the last couple of years about the tax base. The tax base is the cumulative value of all the properties in the district. This year was a very similar increase in the tax base as compared to the previous year. This year was eight-point-one percent. Last year was about seven-point-nine, so that's two years in a row where we've grown over a billion dollars in property value. Not all of that is brand-new construction. Some of that is inflation of existing properties, so that's about three-fourths of the increase in values, and then a quarter of the increase is new construction. So that's good news for all of us as taxpayers, because that, those new properties help absorb some of the levy dollars that we put on the books. So this is how it sorted out. We have a forty-page report that we have to muddle our way through every year with, that MDE provides, and it gives us the maximum amount that we can levy. Last year, our levy was fifty-two-point-seven million, when you add up all three funds that we levy for, and this year, it's looking like it's going to be fifty-six-point-six million. Now, if you look at Attachment B, that's in your board packet, that number is slightly lower. It's saying fifty-four-point-nine million dollars, and that's because MDE is currently missing one debt issue that we're planning for technology coming up early next year. That's a, a cycle that we've been on every three years, and they just didn't get it put on there yet. But they verbally said that it should be approved, and it'll be on our final levy report that gets generated September thirtieth. So we had to put in our own number there, the fifty-six-point-six million, and kind of true it up to what we believe it's going to be. So that's an increase of three-point-nine million, seven-point-four percent compared to the previous year levy. I show this view just to help people kind of understand, how does the levy go up? Most of the levy is generated based on the number of pupil units times a dollar value of, by those pupil units. So thirty-point-eight million of the levy last year was based on the number of students we had in the levy last year, and next year, it's going to be thirty-two-point-three million. So one-point-five million dollars of the three-point-nine total increase is just because we have more pupils. So pupil units are, are basically our student count, and then the secondary students are weighted just a little bit higher than our elementary students. Then there's the expenditure basis portion of the levy, and that's our debt service. That's just basically what does it cost? What's the payment schedule? And that's what we need to spend, so that's what we can levy. So we can levy directly what it's going to cost under the expenditure basis category. Those categories are going up one-point-four million next year. There's a very small levy that's based on the number of residents we have within our district boundaries. There's a community ed levy that is supported based on the number of residents. That one's barely changing. When you round it off, it looks like it's a zero increase, but it's, it's one percent, so it's about ten thousand dollars there. And then tax basis. So it's a myth that as the value of properties go up, therefore, we automatically get more money. That's not true at all. There's just a very small portion of the levy that's calculated based on the value of homes. That goes to support, again, a community ed program, and that's barely changing, about one percent there. And then every year, MDE goes back two years, and they look at all of our categories where we had student counts and expenses, and trues it up and make sure that we actually did spend what we levied for back a couple of years ago, and then they plus or minus us. So there's always a little bit of, like last year was a reduction. Now this year, they're adding another four hundred thousand dollars, because we had more students than what we thought we were going to have when we did that levy. All right. So I tried to also just break it down. What are the top four reasons why the levy would be going up? Long-term facilities maintenance. We have a number of projects that we talked about when we were doing the ten-year plan earlier this summer. There's about six hundred thousand dollars difference in the long-term facility maintenance revenue. There is a school-age childcare special needs levy. This one has never shown up on my top three or four, but we're catching up. We've had increasing costs in this program. It's a program that we can hire staff to assist our students with special needs so that they don't have to pay a higher cost, because if, if they had to pay what it truly costs, the rate would be unreasonable. So this helps us spread that out and keep the rates the same for all students who use school-age childcare. I don't expect that one to be showing up over and over like that. I think this is a one-time thing, and we've got our numbers set a little bit better going forward. And then because of the pupil unit increases of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight, as well as inflation, is expected to be about two-and-a-quarter percent in the coming year, so that automatically added another twenty-five dollars on top of the voter-approved referendum. And so those two, three and four add up to about one-point-six million dollars of change. So these top four reasons are about seventy-two percent of the reason why the levy is changing next year. Hopefully, this is somewhat reasonable or readable, and basically just trying to show you that the voter-approved referendum, the board-approved referendum, and the local optional referendum or local optional revenue, that those numbers are very similar this year. It's nineteen thousand one-hundred-and-forty pupil units payable eighteen. Nineteen thousand four-eighteen is what we're projecting in the next school year. And then it's just multiplying it by the dollar value there. And again, that voter-approved one is going up twenty-five dollars because of the two-and-a-quarter percent projected inflation. The, I know these numbers seem like a lot, where we start talking about twenty-eight, twenty-nine million dollars of levy for voter-approved referendum, local optional, school board, but that's only twelve percent of our general fund budget. So the majority of our budget is coming from state aids and other sources, a little bit of federal in there. But primarily, we're, we're compensated for educating students through the state funding formulas, so this is twelve percent of our budget is what we're talking about there. Most of it, as I said, is calculated on a per-pupil basis, and because of how they, the state has some equalization formulas, they try to help out districts with lower property wealth by throwing in some state aid on that. And so our local levy is funded ninety-four percent by local taxpayers and only six percent by the state. So we're a very, I guess you'd say, a property wealthy district. We get just a little bit of state aid to help cover the voter-approved referendum. I know that seven-point-four percent seemed like a large increase, so I thought it'd be better to maybe take a three-year look at what was happening here. So our levy in two thousand seventeen was fifty-three-point-nine million, and then in two thousand eighteen, it actually declined to fifty-two-point-seven million. So I want people to remember that the levy actually went down in total dollars last year. We did not need as much in the long-term facility maintenance revenue, so that number was skewing and actually decreased the levy. And then with the proposed for two thousand nineteen, if you kind of look at it from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen, it's a five percent growth. So yes, it's a seven-point-four if you look back at two thousand eighteen, but if you look at a two-year period, it's a five percent growth. So I just reiterate that one more time. This is a, be a, a slide I'd like people to keep at the top of their mind, that minus two-point-two and then a plus seven-point-four, if you kind of average that out or compound it, it's a two-point-four-nine percent growth. I rounded up to two-point-five, just to show that, I think that's a very reasonable increase when you're talking about inflation and growing students and, and costs going up, that two-and-a-half and two-and-a-half is a very reasonable, in my opinion, levy increase when you look at it over two years. So what we're recommending as administration is that either tonight or at the next meeting, that you approve the maximum amount. And again, that just helps us set the truth and taxation notices that will be going out to homeowners in mid to late November, and alerts them to the public comment and the meeting that will be discussing the final levy numbers on December fourth. So it's safer to set it at the maximum, even if we don't fully intend to go the maximum. I think we will ultimately recommend that to you, but then there's no, if there's a calculation error that MDE finds in the next two weeks, we're not short-changed, because once you approve, that is it. That is the maximum. So if you just approve the word maximum, that gives us the most flexibility over the next couple of months. And that's it.
Ms. Workman.
Yes, I have a question about, I think it's Attachment D? The one that shows it's property tax levy and rate summary on page two of that. There is a chart that states what the increase in property taxes might be for various valuations of, of homes and businesses, and on all of these, I see either zero or a drop. So when we go through all of this with the seven-point-four increase, it's my, oh my gosh, my taxes are going to increase seven-point-four percent, and they don't. And I know we talk about this every single year, but I think it really needs to be said again. The seven-point-four increase is in the amount of, the total amount that we're
You're correct.
As opposed to what, how it affects your property tax.
That's right. Thank you for pointing that out, Director Workman. If you were lucky enough to not have the tax assessor reav, revalue your home last year, and it was worth exactly two hundred thousand dollars both years, you'd actually, your tax bill will go down by eleven dollars because of, again, the growth in the tax base. So most people, I'm assuming, probably had a slight increase in the value of So, most people, I'm assuming, probably had a slight increase in the value of their property. When they'll get their notices, they'll see that. So, it's not likely that everyone will see a decline in their actual taxes, but it's not going to be a 7.4% increase.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's really, it's really important to at least attempt to educate the public on a lot of this, that their total tax bill includes the city, the county, and the school district.
Correct.
And any change could be as a result of rising taxes or an increased, like you just said, an increased valuation of their property. So property owners really need to look at all of those pieces so they can evaluate which areas of government are.
Efficient.
Efficient. Thank you.
There you go.
Good word.
You're right on. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thanks.
7.03, Approval of Revisions to the Policy Manual. This is a briefing item by the policy committee, and I understand Ms. Workman will be doing the briefing. Ms. Workman?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, I will start with the second group of policies. Policy 402, Disability Nondiscrimination Policy. Policy 407, Employee Right to Know Exposure to Hazardous Substances. Policy 410, Family and Medical Leave Policy. Policy 417, Chemical Use and Abuse. Policy 417.01, Employee Assistants have been reviewed and no changes are being recommended in those policies. So, Policy 403, Discipline, Suspension, and Dismissal of School District Employees. Roman numeral five, Procedures for Administering Policy, has been eliminated. I'd like to remind the board that some time ago, we made a decision that we would not include procedures in policies, because the procedures are the how of the policy and at the discretion of the superintendent. Policy 408, Subpoena of a School District Employee. Section Roman numeral four. The title was changed to simply "application," and in Section B, 4B, the word "executive" was added to the title of the Human Resources Director to conform to our current cabinet descriptions. Policy 414, Mandated Reporting of Child Neglect or Physical or Sexual Abuse. Once again, we made a slight change here. Instead of reporting procedures, we changed, we struck out procedures and replaced it with "process." Once again, primarily because procedures do not need board approval to be changed. However, this process was a little bit more important, and we decided it should stay in the policy, so that if it does change, it would come to the board for review. Policy 415, Mandated Reporting of Meltreatment of Vulnerable Adults. The purposes of this policy is to make clear the statutory requirements of school personnel to report suspected maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Once again, Roman numeral, Section Roman numeral four, we removed procedures and changed that word to "process." Policy 416, Drug and Alcohol Testing. Roman numeral three, which is federally mandated drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers, we removed the word "procedures" and replaced it with "process." 707, Transportation of Public School Students. Roman numeral sexual eight, B1 and 2, Language Concern Specifics, which make it that the school district shall provide transportation for a homeless student regardless of where they live. 708, Transportation of Non-Public School Students. Section Roman numeral four, Application and Procedures. Guess what? The word "process" replaces "procedures." The title for Section Four was changed from Special Education to Students with Disability. And finally, 713, Student Activity Account. The procedures were actually removed from the policy, and they will be found in the Administrative Procedures Panel, Manual, under 713A.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you for the report. 7.04, Closed Session Negotiations. This is an action item.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 03, Subdivision 1. I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
It's been moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess at 6:25 PM. We are reconvened at 6:48 PM.
I move to amend the agenda to add the following items. Approval of the 2018-2020 Rochester Administrators Association, RAA, Work Guide Agreement. Approval of the 2018-2020 Rochester Non-Schedule Work Guide Agreement. Approval of the 2018-2020 Rochester Cabinet Work Guide Agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The agenda has been amended. We have three action items. First one, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2018-2020 Rochester Administrators Association Work Guide Agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. The second action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2018-2020 Non-Schedule Work Guide Agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And the final action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2018-2020 Cabinet Work Guide Agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded twice. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh.
No, I'm not opposing.
That would be poor practice.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay, just a quick summary for those in the audience and maybe watching or watching the live stream. All three agreements came in at a total two-year package of 5% increase over two years. Common language changes, where hospital leave was changed to, employees would receive four hospital days per year, and they could accumulate up to 20 days. Those that currently have 20 days would not lose those 20 days. And then we also, three groups have a dental cap, where the district will pay $50 towards the premium for single coverage and $1.15 towards the premium for employee independent coverage, and like I said, a total two-year package of 5% increase.
Questions, comments? We are adjourned at 6:51 PM.